Alderman Yamas? Say it again. Say it again.
You want to try one more time? You were muted. One more time, you were muted. One more time, you were muted.
I'm not muted. I'm not muted.
He's not muted. It's just very, very soft.
Okay, I heard him. He's here.
He's here. Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderwoman Masiacos. Alderwoman Donnell.
Here.
Alderwoman Franco.
Here.
Alderwoman Seville.
Here.
Alderwoman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Alderwoman Bade.
She's on mute.
You're on mute?
They're both on mute, she knows.
Can you try one more time, Alderwoman Bade?
Do you hear us, Alderwoman Bade? No, she can't hear us.
Is IT in the room?
She looks to be on mute.
Is IT here? It's not an IT issue? There was this one. We... There was this one. We... There was this one. We... There was this one. We...
But me and you were logged. They knew about the problem. They knew about the problem. They were logged in fifteen minutes early. And they never bothered to do anything. They never bothered to do anything. They never bothered to do anything.
How do I mute them? Alderwoman Bade, can you hear us now? No.
Okay.
This is ridiculous.
She's on mute, right? Alderwoman Bade, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, yes, okay. You were on mute the entire time. So, thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here. Love and clear.
And Mayor Urban is absent. Okay.
Okay, now that we went through that technical issue, thanks for your patience, everybody. So, we need a special vote to allow the two Alderwomen and Alderwomen to request permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80 based on the reasonable anticipation of extended illness. Does there allow...
Some move.
Second.
Motion to allow Yamas, Alderwoman Yamas and Alderwoman Bade to participate remotely. It's been moved by Alderwoman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the minutes, 24-0439.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. By voice, vote. We have the mayor's report. Clayton, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Aurora City Council. We are here tonight on the eve of Juneteenth. Of course, a special occasion for America, the world, but particularly here for us in Aurora. As we know, we lost our Alderwoman one year ago on Juneteenth. So, we celebrate her and what we call the Shakita Heartburns City Council Chambers and tomorrow at the Shakita Heartburns Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony. And we have had quite the week. We know that she certainly was a champion for cultural events and certainly for Juneteenth activities that we really went out this week with a number of different activities. Beginning, well, beginning the weekend with a food distribution held by the Black Fraternities and Sororities. John?
Nine o'clock, Black Fraternities and Sororities come together this morning in Aurora to help those in need.
It's the Fourth Annual Juneteenth Food Distribution Drive. One thousand families receive mealboxes with meat and produce. All happen start at nine o'clock this morning in Phillips Park on a first-come, first-served basis. This is all a collaboration between the Black Organizations, Aurora, and the Northern Illinois Food Bank.
A thousand families in the west suburbs are going into the holiday weekend with plenty to celebrate and plenty to eat. Aurora held its Fourth Annual Juneteenth Food Distribution this morning. Families received packages of chicken, beans, cheese, fruit, and vegetables. The effort is a partnership with the Northern Illinois Food Bank and members of the Aurora Divine Nine Alliance, formed from historically back fraternities and sororities. A sign of how important this is, cars started lining up at 3:30 this morning.
Thank you. The Divine Nine, the National Panellody Council, feeding a thousand families in cooperation with the Northern Illinois Food Bank. And as the reporter said, the first car got in line at 3:30. She said she hadn't eaten in over a week with her children in the car with her. So, food insecurity is still real here. Although we're years out of COVID, we know the need is there. So, we thank the Northern Illinois Food Bank and the Black Fraternities and Sororities. The president of the local chapter, we call the National Panellody Council, Joe Grissin, who we know well, also the chairman of the Aurora Housing Authority, will be honored at our Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony tomorrow with the Shakita Heartburns Heritage and Excellence Award. And so, we give them a round of applause for the work that they have done. That's Friday. Well, we really kicked off the week on Thursday, the 13th, with the Aurora African-American Heritage Advisory Board's Mr. and Miss Black Aurora Crowning Ceremony. John?
So, the city of Aurora has a new royal court. I had the pleasure of being the keynote speaker before the new Mr. and Miss Black Aurora and their court were crowned last night. Such fun! This honor for local youth doing amazing things kicks off a week of community activities celebrating Juneteenth. It's all hosted by the Aurora African-American Heritage Advisory Board, and I want to thank them for having me out to be a part of this very special night with so many youth, talented, talented young people. Much love to the Divine Nine that showed so much love last night, too. This morning, nearly 150 members of Black Fraternities and Sororities are going to be giving back to the community at Phillips Park, as we said, providing food to a thousand families, starting at nine. So, props to the Greeks. And tomorrow is the 23rd Annual Juneteenth Freedom and Heritage Celebration at Martin Luther King Park at 3:30. You can find a full list of events on the city's website.
Congrats to you as well on that award. Well deserved.
Real congrats to the new Mr. and Miss Black Aurora.
Absolutely, right?
The city of Aurora has a new royal court. It's all the kickoff Juneteenth week ahead of this holiday next Wednesday. The new King, Queen, Prince and Princess all hail from West and East Aurora High, along with Oswego East and Wabonzi Valley High Schools. They competed in the Mr. and Miss Black Aurora Crowning Ceremony last night. They'll represent Aurora's Black community, mentoring younger students, and taking part in community service.
Good for them!
Yeah, they look excited, too.
Mm-hmm. Six past the hour.
Give a round of applause to the Black Heritage Royal Court. We have three of the four of the royal court here with us. I'm going to ask the Mayor Pro Tim to come down. And each of the students will receive their Mayor's Award of Excellence. And if you represent their schools, you certainly can come down as well. Our first recipient of the Mayor's Heritage and Excellence Award, presented by our Mayor Pro Tim. Those of you who are here, Mayor Urban couldn't be here tonight. He will be tomorrow at the Youth Summit and the Flag Raising Ceremony. So, Mayor Pro Tim, Alderwoman Seville, will present our princess of the royal court. She's a junior at Wabonzi Valley High School. She's involved, come on down, Alderwoman. She's involved in the color guard, basketball, and wrestling, and track. She's so involved in Harvest of Faith Church. And she volunteers her time at the Marie Wilkinson Center and just in the Alden Court. She just does so much for the community. If you can give a round of applause for Princess Maya Harden. Come on down, Maya.
Okay, I'd like to read this proclamation. Congratulations. This is the Mayor's Award of Excellence as hereby presented to Maya Harden, princess of the Aurora Black Heritage Royal Court, for making history as the first ever Aurora Black Heritage Royal Court and for preparing for the future with your community service activities that will take place during the 2024 to 2025 school year. Hereby signed, Richard C. Urban, Mayor of Aurora, Illinois. Congratulations.
Thank you, man. Our prince, our prince who couldn't make it today is from East Aurora High School, Dwayne Hudson. He'll be there tomorrow and receive his award then. But our queen is here, and she represents Oswego East High School. Alderwoman Bug, she is very involved in the Spanish Honor Society, the English Honor Society, involved in the community with the Dream Dance Academy. She volunteers her time to tutor and mentor younger students. Big round of applause for the queen, Ms. Black Aurora, Kayer Evans.
Congratulations. I am honored to be able to read this plaque as well. This is the Mayor's Award of Excellence as hereby honorably presented to Kayer Evans, Queen of the Aurora Black Heritage Royal Court, for making history as the first ever Royal Black Heritage Royal Court and for preparing for the future with your community service activities that will take place during the 2024 to 2025 school year. Hereby signed, Richard C. Urban, Mayor of the City of Aurora. Thank you. Congratulations.
Send a round of applause for the Queen of the Royal Court, Kayer Evans. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Black Aurora. The King of the Royal Court is his senior year at West Aurora High School, where he is involved in sports and fine arts in the community. He's a leader in the Aurora Gators football team and just mentors students who are younger than him. We look forward to him leading the court. Big round of applause to King Cameron Tolliver. And Alderwoman Tolliver, if you want to come down as well.
Okay, I am honored to be able to read this proclamation. The Mayor's Award of Excellence is hereby honorably presented to Cameron Tolliver, King of the Aurora Black Heritage Royal Court, for making history as the first ever Aurora Black Heritage Royal Court and preparing for the future with your community service activities that will take place during the 2024 to 2025 school year. Hereby signed, Richard C. Urban, Mayor of the City of Aurora. Congratulations.
Another round of applause for Cameron Tolliver. Thank you. They will have the honor of raising the Juneteenth flag tomorrow with the Flag Raising Ceremony. Thank you so much for your leadership to the young people. We continue Juneteenth celebrations on Saturday with the ribbon-cutting ceremony of Aurora's newest Black-owned business. And when we talk about the freedom that's focused on in Juneteenth, we can't talk about current freedom without talking about health and wellness. John?
Just in time for Juneteenth, Aurora's newest Black-owned enterprise opens for business. It's called Halo Heat Sauna Studios, offering state-of-the-art wellness services of all kinds. Dolly Jolly and her husband Steven, they say that their treatments are for individuals and families. Halo Heat is located across from the Fox Valley Mall. All right, 6:36 right now.
Big round of applause for Donna Jolly and Steven Evans, who are here with us. Come on down as we focus on health and wellness. And we're going to ask them, after their presentation of their grand opening plaque, to share a little bit about the business as well.
Okay, this is for the grand opening from Halo Heat Sauna Studios. Congratulations on opening your new business in Aurora. Welcome home, Saturday, June 15, 2024. Richard C. Urban, Mayor.
Can you share about the business?
So, real quick to tell everyone about Halo Heat. Glad to see the gospel run here. Congratulations on your win. Love to see health and wellness being a focus in the Black community, and that is what our business is about. We provide respiratory care through salt therapy as well as infrared sauna, which is great for muscle relaxation, stress reduction, cardiovascular health. And we also include red light therapy. So, if you're trying to get rid of those fine lines and wrinkles, rebuild some of that collagen, come on in and see us.
In addition to that, we have like a cooling lounge for further relaxation, massage chairs, and other therapeutics as well. And also, I grow our own organic tea that is given away to all patrons and is my little contribution as well. With that being said, that's Halo Heat Sauna Studios on the outskirts of Fox Valley Mall. Thank you.
And we talk about health and wellness. Certainly, Halo Heat's coming new to the space. But we have a group of individuals here who've been focused on health and wellness in the Black community for a number of years. And remember last fall, we brought in Faith Niang, a community health nurse here, really talk about health and wellness and the Gospel Run. And we participate, and I say we, the Fox Valley team has participated in the Gospel Run for a number of years. And out of the entire Chicago land region, last year, they came in third place. Big round of applause for the Fox Valley team. They are represented by the Shepherd's Table, you know, 10-plus Black churches, 300-plus members who all participate. And tonight, we're here with a special presentation for them and to talk more as we go into the Juneteenth holiday about health and wellness in the Black community. We're going to ask all of the Gospel Runners to come on in and fill up the stage, and we'll turn the mic then over to Pastor Julian Spencer. Let's give them a round of applause as they come down. Fill in the stage area. Some in front of the podium.
Don't go too far. Keep going through the... Give a preacher a mic, boys. You're in trouble.
And we could ask the head pastors to step down with Dr. Spencer.
Okay, I am honored to be able to read this this evening. This is the Mayor's Award of Excellence as honorably presented to the Gospel Run 2023 Fox Valley team for your impressive third-place win in the 2023 Gospel Run and for your efforts to better African-American health in our community. Hereby signed, Richard C. Mayor, City of Aurora, Illinois. June 18, 2024. Congratulations.
So, I'm Pastor Spencer, for those who don't know me. And I stand here representing the more than 10 churches of Shepherd's Table here in Fox Valley and the nearly 3,000-plus members that we serve. And we all care about African-American health in Kane County. In Kane County, African-Americans experience the shortest life expectancy among all races. On average, African-Americans live 75 years versus 81 years plus for everyone else. Furthermore, we lose collectively over 11,000 years of life due to premature death and other illnesses that are uniquely ours. Research shows that exercising more than 30 minutes a day for the week adds around seven years to a person's life. Regular exercise is the key. And we have, as churches come together, we found an exciting way for us to inspire intentional exercise and diet in our churches, and it's the Gospel Run. Gospel Run is a yearly 5K walk and run in Chicago. Glad to have Executive Director here. And African-American churches in Kane County have come together to the tune of 300 or more over the last several years. And on this week, as we celebrate freedom as African-Americans, we celebrate this area of freedom that we still have yet to work on, but we're working on it together. We can live longer. We can live stronger, and we can live healthier. But it's going to take all of us who care about African-American health to come together and support initiatives like this. Thank you to our mayor. Thank you to our city councilmen and all of those that help support us in what we do. And I say all the time, we're better together. And through Gospel Run this year, on September 14, anyone can join us, even you all. Anybody can join us at Oak Street Beach, where we will come together and we will be better together as a community. So, we're so happy to have, as our partners with Shepherd's Table, all the pastors that are here today. Some of them are here, Pastor Thompson from New Covenant Church is here. Pastor McGowan from Gail's Memorial Church is here. And we have our, one of our principal partners, which is Ascension Mercy Medical Center, and Dr. Faith Niang. She is our faith community nurse. She brings all of this together. And I want her to come real quick and introduce, amen, our Gospel Run partner.
Thank you, Pastor Spencer. So, this is really exciting because we have a vision this summer that we know that the statistics are daunting. But as a church community, African-American church community, we have a vision of everyone exercising this summer in our churches. We just, we want to see what that would do to health. So, we're really excited, really excited for the vehicle that the Gospel Run has created. So, we want to thank our Executive Director, Niyasha. So, thank you so much. Yes.
Hello, Fox Valley. My name is Niyasha Niyamaphene. Thank you for not attempting my last name. I am the creator of Gospel Run and the Chief Servant Officer, and I am excited to be here from Chicago to present this trophy to the Fox Valley Health and Faith Network. We, 11 years ago, launched our first Gospel Run 5K in Jackson Park, soon to be the Obama Library site. And pretty early on, realized that a revolution had been ignited that was being carried forward and propelled by the community and the culture. And that revolution is one that created a safe space for people to really take a step and do a new thing that they maybe never thought they would do or could do. And 10 years ago, we launched our Gospel Run Teams Program as a vehicle for churches to really do health promotion and to create run-walk teams within their congregations. And so, there was a group in Fox Valley that said, "We see this church team program, and we're going to take it one step further and use this as a vehicle to unite an entire city around health and wellness." And instead of just organizing in one of our churches, we're going to use this to organize all the churches on behalf of healthy communities and healthy families. We have a chronic disease epidemic, excuse me. We have a preventable chronic disease epidemic in this country, and it is accelerating. What's so insidious about it is that so many Americans have just accepted it as the norm. But the newest emerging chronic disease population is actually young people, younger than these people right here. And so, it is all, up to all of us to really come together in community and create a place for people to change the narrative. And that is what Fox Valley is doing in partnership with the Park District and creating a vehicle for come-one, come-all if you want to change your health life. So, I just say congratulations to the Fox Valley Faith and Health Network. Congratulations to all of our pastors for your leadership, our team leaders, Faith and Glynnis, and everyone else who has been a part of this movement that has been life-changing for so many in this community. And you are evidence that together we win. So, I say, let's keep winning. Thank you. So, I present not the first trophy that Fox Valley has won. This is actually the second team competition trophy that Fox Valley has won, and I believe it will not be the last. So, congratulations.
Another round of applause for the Fox Valley team representing Aurora Health and Wellness. Talk about freedom that Juneteenth represents. Certainly, our health and wellness is key. Thank you so much. And as the champs in the winter take their seed, just want to remind everyone on Juneteenth tomorrow, 159th anniversary of Juneteenth. We have our Juneteenth Youth Summit, 8:30 to 12:30, with over 100 students, with our keynote speaker, Major General Rodney Boyd, the commander of the Illinois National Guard, and Jasmine Minor, ABC News reporter. And following that, at 1:00 PM, we have the Shakita Heartburns Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony at One Aurora Plaza. We invite you all out. Happy Juneteenth, everyone. One Aurora.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to begin the meet of the meeting, so to speak. So, I know all of you are busy. You're very welcome to attend and continue staying here and watching in the city council. But if you have other things to do and prepare for tomorrow, now would be an opportunity. We'll take a few minutes, and you may exit the city council chambers. Thanks for attending. Okay. Okay, we'll resume the meeting. At this point in time, I've invited the mayor's staff to have a presentation on two issues. I believe Alex Alexander will be presenting. We're going to do that next. Alex Voight, I think is going to be giving the staff report.
Good evening, City Council. Alex Voight with the mayor's office. I'm here to provide a bit of an update on the fireworks ordinance. So, to give you an overview of 2023's numbers as we are not officially in the 2024 fireworks season. So, I did just want to run through the history of this ordinance for any aldermen that are newer. Following the 2021 fireworks season, the mayor tasked city staff with revisiting sections of the code that pertain to fireworks and gave us the job of increasing options for enforcement. So, it was a multidisciplinary... group, a number of different departments and divisions participated, and then in October of 2021, the City Council did approve changes to a number of sections of the code. In January and February of 2022, staff began training. So the Law Department conducted training with various departments, customer service, property standards, Police Department, Fire. The Police Department underwent training with representatives from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources on how to handle some of the fireworks if they should encounter them. So it was a very lengthy process. So in 2022, John, can you scroll down to the numbers? I wanted to run through some of the numbers in terms of totals, excuse me. So in 2020, we had 643 total calls pertaining to fireworks. 2021, we had 356. 2022, we had 331, and then 2023, we had 283. So here's the total calls per ward for 2022. And then, John, if you could go down to the third page for me. Okay, so for the 2023 year, we broke it into two different sections. The first is individuals that engaged with the option to report through the city website. Now, this was the result of the ordinance changes that allowed residents to report fireworks after the fact. The challenge that we encountered utilizing the Police Department only for enforcement is that they have to catch someone in the act, which is very challenging. So we did provide the option for individuals to call in, I'm sorry, to report online after the fact, provide videos, photos, et cetera. So in 2023, we had 27 residents engaged through the website. And then, if you can scroll down a little bit more, John, thank you. And we had 256 calls to the Aurora Police Department. So you can see, the majority of residents are still calling 911 about fireworks. So our plan for this year is to continue to push out the information through our social media channels, through the website. We'll be providing information on the city's Facebook page. I know several aldermen put the information in their ward newsletters, did mailers. So we'll be providing that information in short order here. And we're hopeful that we can continue to push out the option to report through the website versus calling 911. Of course, you can still call 911, but the reporting through the website gives us the opportunity to track the case a little bit differently. I did want to point out that in 2022, we had seven cases that went to hearing and closed with fines. In 2023, we had two cases. One was dismissed because the witness did not appear, and the other was closed with a fine. And in instances where we are not able to cite the individual, but we do have an address where the incident was reported, we do send a warning letter to them informing them that a report was made, that fireworks were at their address, and here are the possible repercussions should you do that again. So we have been working to address this issue on a number of different fronts, but definitely are still looking for people to utilize the self-reporting option more in the 2024 year. We will also be working with APD. They'll be doing their training, their in-service training on the fireworks ordinance, how they can provide the information to residents on how to report, and then staff, if staffing allows for it, they will be doing fireworks details again over the Fourth, towards the Fourth of July weekend, where they have cars assigned specifically to fireworks calls. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions to the City Council? Alderman Frankel?
So I got a couple of questions about these numbers.
Sure.
The 2023, two cases?
That went to hearing.
Okay, do we know how many citations were issued in 2023?
It would have been, this is the ones that went through the portal. What we're receiving is a lot of incomplete information. So we do need people to fill out the form completely, provide the complete information so that we're able to go through the entire hearing process.
And these fireworks-
So more warning letters than citations, aldermen, so.
Okay, because that's amazing, because the amount of complaints that we've been getting over the last few years, when I see these numbers, I expect them to be triple digits opposed to single digits. So that's shocking to me.
Yeah.
And this takes into consideration not the Third and the Fourth of July, but basically the whole summer around there whenever there's fireworks. It could be as of today through August if there's fireworks and stuff like that.
It's, we did June through July at that.
June, July, okay. Just surprising. That just kind of, that was a shocker to me, because we get, you know, we've been getting these complaints. That's why we update the ordinance.
Yeah.
And the fact that people aren't calling in or not following through is surprising. And then they're calling 911 as opposed to the 256, I think it's 55, 50 number-
John, can you pull up the website?
Yeah.
So we do have the option for people to report online.
Sure, right.
And that's what's up on the screen now, and they can upload the photo and the videos. I think the challenge with this is it does require a certain level of engagement from the person making the complaint, and that can be very challenging. But we did want to provide an option for individuals if they do have a ring doorbell or something along those lines. So where we, I mean, we did have greater success in 2022 with seven cases with hearings. So we'll see what we can do in 2024.
Well, we love to read the data, say, hey, we only had two cases, how great it was, but we know there was more than two people shooting off fireworks last year. So it's kind of like, it's hard to read that data, because as you said, are the people engaging or are they just complaining and not following through? And it's just, it just surprises me, just based on what we've seen over the years, so.
It is a very challenging, it's a very challenging quality of life issue, and we do appreciate the alderman's support in terms of spreading the information about the fireworks ordinance and the fact that you could be cited or fined for lighting off those fireworks. So yeah, we hope that more individuals will utilize the website versus calling 911 this year.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Alderman Smith?
Yes. What if they don't have pictures? Can I still submit this, or is that a must-have? Is it asterisk?
They, they can. It's, it is not a must-have, but then I think it's, it's just a matter of providing enough evidence that can stand up in a hearing, because it is taken to an administrative hearing.
Then there was the process that we talked about when we did this ordinance, that if the police go out there, they would be able to find evidence of fireworks in someone's backyard, let's say.
So that was, if, I believe, if that was property standards, was that right, or if staff, any staff that's able to find evidence of, you know, reasonable evidence if there were fireworks there, that is an option in terms of creating what you need that will stand up in hearing.
And then my last question is, how soon will you guys get this out on our city's social media so that we can start spreading the words as well? I put it in my last newsletter, but we want to make sure that-
Yes. We'll have something, I believe, by next week.
Great, thank you.
And we'll be pushing it out on the website as well. Thank you.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for being proactive and getting this out into the community. And the numbers show that we are progressing. So I think that some of the yard signs and stuff has been positive. I just want to clarify, because we do have FUSIS, right? If somebody does have ring doorbell footage or cellphone footage, all that could be used, and if the officer responds to that call, that can all be uploaded at that time as evidence.
So that is a great question, and this is the first year that we've had FUSIS, so I have to ask about that, because I honestly don't know.
Okay. And then just follow up on what Alderman Smith, this, everything will be bilingual, including the website, yard signs, literature, and-
So the literature previously and the warning letter with the ordinance attached, that was bilingual. The yard signs, I will have to, I'll follow up on that. But I know the website, the information, the static information the city puts in print is bilingual.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just one clarif-
Deb Lang?
As far as the past hearings, people can submit their ring doorbell footage on the city website, because you can download the pictures and footage. So if you're able to access that yourself, you can put up on the form.
Does it have to clearly depict the person? Like, if you're shooting from far across the street, you're finding one person, or are you finding that house, or, you know what I'm saying?
It really depends on what we observe. Everyone that goes to admin hearings is reviewed by the Law Department. We also have, property standards go out, and we ask that the person that sent in the complaint comes in as well, if we can get them in. So it just, it really is a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then the second item, we wanted to have a little report on, which was the cooling centers. Alex, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Alex Alexander, Chief Management Officer, Mayor's Chief of Staff. So the city website does contain information about both warming and cooling centers, what's on there currently, our locations for the library, the public library, as well as several park district facilities, as well as the Salvation Army and senior services. I've spoken to Tony Martinez, and we are going to also, similar to the fireworks, be getting out some information to folks. And then we monitor through our EMA folks, if we see, as in past years, an extended hot weather period, we will seek to do what we can additionally through actual city services. In the past, we've done it through community services. We've done it through, you know, a combination of, you know, maybe youth services and other departments. But right now, we're not seeing it long-term yet, but we're going to prepare and put out the information accordingly, and we're very thankful to our community partners for offering both the cooling and the warming. So I don't know what other information. I did, I didn't get a response back yet, but I did ask earlier today our customer services to see what kind of call volume they were getting for requests for information. So we will, we will monitor that.
And if the need arises, would we be opening up our transportation centers?
Well, the transportation center is a public, open building. So, I mean, people can go in there for some cooling respite during the day, but that's always been the case.
Yeah, okay. Any questions to the City Council?
I have a question.
Alderman Smith?
Can we create, I know you said it's on the city website, and I have seen it, can we create some type of a template for, to easily be used on Facebook so that we can push it out?
So Tony, last year we did, in past years, we have pushed out social media, and Tony's group is doing that again.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll make sure you have access to that for constituents as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer a comment?
We do.
Will you please read our rules for public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person to offer a public comment?
Brandon Rodriguez.
I had a package for each one of you. I'm not sure if we're able to pass them through.
Give it to staff over here, please.
Appreciate it. I believe Alice to move on.
You have three minutes beginning now, sir.
All right. On June 18th of 2019, you guys reviewed and updated an ordinance of the city of Aurora for allowed areas to sell alcohol and liquor. On October 22, 2019, you guys also updated an ordinance of the city of Aurora for the possession, use, cultivation, transportation, and dispensing of adult cannabis. Currently, there's five cannabis dispensaries and over 15 liquor stores located in the city of Aurora. If we take a look at the chart of crimes against society provided by the APD, and we compare the numbers from 2023 and 2022, 2024, associating DUIs, nonviolent family offenses, and liquor law violations, we have actually matched and growed those numbers, taking in consideration that we're only halfway through the year. You guys also approved the expansion of the asset house that was already at the maximum capacity of 266 occupants. The number of occupants will grow to more than 4, 800, and which two out of every three people that lives here stands every morning, stands in a corner of a red light or intersection as for money, then goes to the nearest liquor store to spend that money. I do not portray any criminal activities. I do not portray the consume of, and use of liquor or any type of substance. The only thing that I portray is art and education for the people who's following the same career as me. On the second package, you guys can see information about the small business location that I leased. In just one month, the month of March, I spent over $15,000 for a place that has helped small business owners to start their career for more than 18 years. I paid my fees for the permits of the state of Illinois and to the city of Aurora. I also paid $4,280 to a local business in downtown Aurora to create and install a sign for me. I bought a $1 million insurance for the business location and for my clients. I opened my LLC and invested all any equipment, furniture, and whatever I needed in order to follow the ordinances of my community. I am here today to ask you to please reconsider the idea of opening my tattoo shop. I am not asking for money or donations. I simply just want to have the same opportunity as other small business owners to create mine. So, thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Would the clerk please read the name of the next person wishing to give a public comment?
Edward Ash.
Edward Ash? Doesn't appear to be present.
Okay. Next person is Cynthia Rocha. Anna Rocha?
One Rocha, Cynthia Rocha, then Anna Rocha, please.
Juan Rocha?
And he's using a translator.
Okay. Mr. Rocha, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you.
I'm coming here to express my opposition. To the installation of a cellular tower. And to Lebanon Park. I have three points to express that I not agree with. First, the community wasn't informed in any way, or- I have- I have two neighbors, one across the street and one on the side, that they also never received any type of information or letter to tell them what was going on. For me, this is not a clear action. This is affecting all the neighborhood and the community. The second point is I live across the street of the park. I lived for 15 years there, and as any other person that lives in Aurora. We pay taxes. For recreational areas. This is the way that we keep our duty, stay away from shootings and drugs. Therefore, I am asking to reconsider the installation of the tower. Therefore, I am asking to reconsider the installation of the tower, looking for another place. Porque es un área pública, es de los ciudadanos, el parque. Because this is a public area from the citizens. Y esta compañía, es una compañía privada que puede hacer cambios porque tienen el poder económico de poder ponerlo en algún otro lugar. Because the company that is doing this has the financial power. It's a private company, and they can look for another place for the tower. La otra, la última punto que tengo es según he leído, la torre está de mi casa a 110, 120 pies. Es algo que no, yo he leído, y no es, no es la distancia adecuada para poner una torre cerca de la casa. Okay, and the last point is I just got information and read about that the tower is going to be 120 feet away from my house. And I believe this is something that shouldn't be as close for a residential area. It's not appropriate to have a tower closer. Esos son mis tres puntos que viene expresar, y espero tener una respuesta importante de nuestros representantes aquí con ustedes. Those are my three petitions and that I would like to express to you, and I'm waiting for an answer for the council. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the name of the next person wishing to give a public comment.
Anna Rocha. Cynthia Rocha.
Thank you.
Okay, Cynthia Rocha, you have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Many of you recognize me as I have been speaking at these meetings since the first meeting. As my father mentioned specifically, there was no notice in Spanish for any of the notices that were sent out. In fact, my mother and I went door to door, and we only, besides our family, three other families received the letter in general, and they didn't understand it due to the language barrier. Now, the city clerk, I believe, is passing out, there's a packet for every two aldermen, which is citing sources, medical sources and scientific sources, which show the deterioration of health due to cellular towers. This includes neurological effects such as Parkinson's, Alzheimer's. There's also a specific study that is focused on diabetes. This exacerbates anyone who is already immunocompromised, including both my mother and myself. There are different packages that are properly labeled that should be passed around. They include these studies, as I was mentioning. They also include case reports specifically. And most importantly, there was a lawsuit that was won by the Environmental Trust and, excuse me, the Children's Health Defense. And it alleged that the current FCC standards for what would be considered quote unquote "safe" actually had detrimental effects. I would encourage all of you to read that because prior to these meetings, it has been alleged by the representative here, specific for this tower, meaning specifically AT&amp;T, that the FCC limits are safe, ergo, they are not doing anything illegal. And while that may be true, there is nothing in the literature that is saying that the FCC limits are safe. They might not be illegal, that does not mean that it is healthy. Now, as we have mentioned before, between my mother, myself, and my father, I am severely ill. I have spent in and out of the hospital for two years. And in fact, there are multiple times where I considered not coming because I was meant to be hospitalized. I am 21 years old. The voice of the community should not fall on one person in order to represent the whole. The majority of people that I've talked to are working, and they cannot make the meeting, so it falls onto me. You all are representatives. I have a petition signed both online by change.org and in person, as I mentioned, door to door. We have reached 153 signatures against this telecommunications tower in Lebanon Park. If AT&amp;T cannot find another place, that is not the fault of the community, and it is not the problem of the community. Arc's health is not for sale. And I encourage all of you to actively read the literature that I have provided fully before making an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Madam Clerk, please read the name of the next person wishing to give a public comment?
Anna Rocha.
Anna Rocha, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Anna Rocha. And as my daughter has mentioned, the main, the main point that we wanted to clarify here is that they claim that they did send notices to the residents around the park. We verified that that is not true. In fact, we went door to door informing our neighbors what was going on before the first meeting. The three people that got the letter along with us couldn't understand it because it was sent specifically only in English. And the person that is working with AT&amp;T should know the community. The community around there, it's mostly Spanish-speaking only. So if you really wanted to inform the community what was going on, it should have been bilingual. At least offer some number to call and get it informed in Spanish. That was not the case. Also, we got the signatures. None of the neighbors want the tower there. It's, it's a health risk for us. In the previous meeting, it was mentioned that one of the aldermen noticed that the tower closest to the residence of his is 1,200 feet away. And I want to know why it's okay for installing a tower 120 feet close to a house. It's a big difference. And I want to know if that has anything to do with racial issues? Because the other tower that was mentioned before, it's in a white community. This is a mostly Hispanic community. So just wanted to point that out. And I expect you to read the papers that were provided. Really think about it. It's not an opinion, those are facts. And they need to be looked at and read seriously, taken into account before you make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk read the name of the next person wishing to give a public comment?
That was a final speaker.
Okay, thank you. The next item of the business of the City Council this evening is the public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you read the first item under public hearings?
24-0427, Public Hearing on a Proposed Resolution Authorizing the Submission of an Application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Urban Shelter Program for an amount not to exceed $2 million in funding for the renovation of the facility at 659 South River Street, owned and operated by Hesett House for the purpose of expanding capacity in their family shelter.
Okay, I believe staff has a presentation for the public hearing this evening. Julie Franquino is present to give testimony.
Yes, I have required items that must be read for the public hearing. Julie Franquino, I'm the grant writer for the city. The city of Aurora intends to submit a grant application on behalf of Hesett House for the renovation of their facility at 659 South River Street for the purpose of expanding capacity in their family shelter. The Hesett House project includes construction of a new sleeping area for families, a new locker room, a computer lab, a clothes closet, case management and staff offices, children's play areas, a platform lift for ADA accessibility, a renovated activity room, new restrooms, and improved security features. The entire city of Aurora, as well as the continuum of care regions served by Hesett House, will benefit from this project. The total cost of the project is anticipated to be $1,762,875, of which $1,743,000 will go towards renovations, and $19,875 will come to the city of Aurora for activity delivery costs to administer the project. No matching city of Aurora funds will be used for this project. $1,743,000 of the project will benefit low to moderate income individuals. The project will renovate Hesett House's family shelter area to allow the shelter to house 120 people. Renovation costs will be $1,743,000, including $165,000 for demolition, $690,000 for general carpentry, $135,000 for mechanical and HVAC systems, $230,000 for electrical work, $210,000 for plumbing, $50,000 for fire protection systems, and $263,000 for construction management utilities and general conditions. Activity delivery costs will be an additional $19,875 for a total of $1,762,875. No additional funding is required for this project, and no one will be displaced as a result of the CDBG grant assisted activities. The total amount of funding expected to be awarded through the DCEO, that's Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, CDBGCV Urban Shelter Program, has yet to be determined, but it will be at least $15 million, and awards will range from $500,000 to $2 million. In its 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan, the city of Aurora Community Development Division has established goals to strengthen and expand housing opportunities, improve public service assistance, including the prevention and reduction of homelessness, and improve access and quality of amenities to foster community revitalization. The 2020 through 24 consolidated plan may be found at, I'm going to read the web address, The project is fully aligned with that plan. Are there any comments from the public or alderpeople?
Is there anybody from the public wishing to give testimony this evening? If so, please step forward. Is there any member of the public wishing to give testimony? If so, please step forward.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there any member of the City Council have any questions about this?
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you. Just the questions on timeline. We're just agreeing that we're going to apply for the money.
Correct.
Once we receive it, then construction will begin, correct?
Correct. The public hearing was a required element for the grant application, and there will be a resolution following.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, have been moved by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Oh, Alderman Bog, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I was listening very closely, and you finally got to amenities, which some people coming out of COVID, at least spoke to me about upgrading some of the amenities there. I knew funds were going to be going to Hesett House, so didn't get a chance to look into it in great detail. But besides remodeling and construction and those things, do you know if Hesett House has had the opportunity to upgrade the amenities? Simple things as bedding, new bedding, new, you know, those types of things?
So those types of things would be beyond the scope of allowable costs for this grant project. So I cannot speak to that. I'm sorry. That would be a question for Hesett House.
Sure, I will follow up, thank you.
Okay, motion made. The second, will the clerk please call the roll? Mrs. George, you're on the public hearing.
Alderman Yanis. Alderwoman Garza.
Yes?
Alderman Donnell.
Just to be clear, this is to adjourn the public hearing?
Correct.
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes, yes, yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Love yes, zero no.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Will the clerk please read the item of the next one?
24-0444, Public Hearing on a Proposed Resolution Authorizing the Submission of an Application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Urban Shelter Program for an amount not to exceed $2 million in funding for the construction of a new shelter at 418 Oak Avenue, owned and operated by Mutual Ground for the purpose of expanding the capacity of their shelter for victims of domestic violence.
Okay, Julie Franquino from staff, is there another presentation? Please proceed.
Yes. So the Mutual Ground project is the first of a multi-phased project. The scope of the CDBGCV-funded project consists of construction of a new two-story, 40-bed, 12,000-square-foot housing facility for the women and children served by Mutual Ground, located on Mutual Ground's campus at 418 Oak Avenue in Aurora. The proposed project will provide for the relocation of the housing component from the existing historic building on campus and allow for a future phase of construction to repair the existing historic building and bring it up to code to serve other aspects of Mutual Ground's mission. The entire Mutual Ground service area encompassing all of the city of Aurora, Southern Kane County, and Kendall County will benefit from this project. The total cost of this phase of the Mutual Ground project is anticipated to be $5,758,200, with $2 million coming from the CDBGCV grant funds and the remaining $3,758,200 coming from State of Illinois appropriations. No city of Aurora funds will be used for this project. The full $2 million from this grant application will benefit low to moderate income individuals. This project will construct a new two-story, 40-bed, 12,000-square-foot shelter facility on the Mutual Ground campus. $2 million in CDBG funds will be used toward the construction of this facility, including $99,360 for insurance and bonding, $33,800 for site development, $70,800 for utilities, $87,600 for a parking lot, $45,000 for concrete, $152,400 for structural systems, $460,800 for mechanical and HVAC systems, $412,800 for electrical work, $188,400 for plumbing, $51,600 for fire protection systems, and $397,440 for general construction conditions. An additional $3,758,200 is required to complete this project and will come from a State of Illinois line item appropriation, re-appropriated in the state's FY25 budget for $5 million under the Public Act 103-0006, Section 390. The following activities will be completed with this additional project funding. $20,000 for survey, soil boring and testing activities, $353,800 for site development, $70,800 for utilities, $87,600 for a parking lot, $31,800 for concrete, $98,800 for landscaping, $2,826,000 for building shell and interior finishes, $248,400 for general contractor fees, and $25,000 for permit fees. No one will be displaced as a result of the CDBG grant assisted activities. As with the other project, the total amount of funding expected to be awarded through the DCEO CDBGCV Urban Shelter Program has yet to be determined, but will be at least $15 million. Awards will range from $500,000 to $2 million. And in its 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan, the city of Aurora Community Development Division has established goals to strengthen and expand housing opportunities, improve public service assistance, including the prevention and reduction of homelessness, and improve access and quality of amenities to foster community revitalization. The 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan This project is fully aligned with that plan. Are there any questions or comments from alderpeople or public for this project?
So is there anyone from the public wishing to step forward, to be heard for the purpose of public comment? Is there anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Step forward, please. Give a public comment.
Second.
Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Is there any questions or comments from the City Council? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yanis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
The hearing is adjourned. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the committee reports. Chairwoman Patty Smith, give the DE committee report, please.
Yes, I will, Mirko Temm. The Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and reviewed the following item: An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the telecommunication facility twenty forty-two eleven used on the property located at ten ten Lebanon Street. And I believe the petitioner is here for a presentation for us. Or maybe not. Staff.
Good evening. Ed Seben, zoning and planning director for City of Aurora. I'm just going to give a real brief introduction. John, if you could just put up the, bring up the aerial, please. This is a conditional use request for a one hundred and twenty-five-foot monopole at Lebanon Park. So if you look at the aerial there, it is the baseball field at the lower right portion of the park. There's an existing light pole that is just outside the back of Wright Field, near Lafayette Street. That is where the, the light pole, which is thirty-five foot high, would be replaced with the one hundred and twenty-five-foot monopole with the lights, the lights put back on at the current height. The, this has been done at several other Fox Valley Park District parks, high schools, both public and private high schools, where they've taken, there've been sports fields or football fields where they'll take a light stand and replace it with a monopole cell tower and put the light back on. So it's been successful in other places. We have Andrew Flowers here from AT&amp;T. I know there was a request for him to further discussion with the Park District. He can answer that. And also Jeff Palmquist with the Park District is here. But before I turn it over to them, there were a couple of comments about notifications, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, so the requirement is that properties within two hundred and fifty feet of the outer edges of the park, so everything in blue, you have to go two hundred and fifty feet beyond that, not including public right-of-way. So you have to go beyond the street, so it's actually more than two hundred and fifty feet are notified. City of Aurora, we provide them with an information sheet, a detail when and where the hearing is, who they can call, send written comments or call, and date and time of the hearing. And so that was done. I did review the notifications, and there were a total of a hundred and forty properties that were notified. The majority of those were homes. There was a couple of properties that were either City of Aurora or Park District properties outside of this area. But the majority, about a hundred and thirty or so, were, were actual homes. So, so the notifications did go out. We did confirm that. And then the other comment that was made, the, the roaches spoke at the public hearing, and now their house is actually on the north end of the park, on Lebanon Street, and they're actually five hundred and twenty-five feet from the proposed monopole. So I just wanted to clarify that. If there's any questions to staff, otherwise I can turn it over to Andrew Flowers with AT&amp;T. I think he has a follow-up.
Any questions to Mr. Ed Seben from the city council?
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Before we get to AT&amp;T and the Park District, thank you for talking about the notice that it went out to so many houses and that. Did it, I guess, the first question that was, one of the residents posed to me was, did it go out in Spanish? That was one of the major takeaways we had from the census. We had all our partners there, census twenty twenty, and it was the pledge of administration that all official notices would go out in English and Spanish. So that's my question.
No, it did not go out. If we are directed that way, we'd be glad to do that. We have an official translator, who, she was here just now. We would work with her on providing a Spanish, I guess, option to that notice. So if we're directed to that, that would be fine. We've previously asked with the law department, it was, we were told that was not a requirement, but obviously if we're directed to do that, we can do that in the future. I also wanted to add that besides the, there were, so out of the hundred and forty, there were three property, properties that showed up at the public hearing. And then we got about five phone calls at our office, and once we explained what the, what the proposal was, there were no objections to it. So.
I believe the staff was asked at the BZNE committee meeting in the future if they could change the form to include, if nothing else, at least one sentence in, in Spanish in the future for all mailings.
We're in the process of working on that. We would probably duplicate what we have in English instead of, maybe not just one line, we would do the whole thing.
Right. That'd be great. Thank you. Alderman Lash.
Thank you. Is there a reason, who, who requires the two hundred and fifty foot? Is that on all zoning issues or just with towers?
No, it's, it's any, it's any map amendment, which is a rezoning, any conditional use, or any text amendment. So anything with a public hearing is a two hundred and fifty feet. If it's a, the other, the other difference is if it's a variance, which is also a public hearing, there's a hundred and fifty-foot notice. So that's by ordinance, and I believe that might be state statute, too.
I do think state statutes. Thank you.
Any other questions? And we had a presentation from.
Yes, gentlemen's here.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Flowers. I am the Senior Real Estate and Construction Manager for AT&amp;T Mobility for Illinois, Wisconsin. We're here this evening to hopefully answer all your questions in regards to this communication facility that we're interested in building in the park to better the community and to provide service that is currently lacking in the area. At our previous hearings, we have discussed the location of the tower. Why is it there? What does it look like? I think there's some other photos here we could probably bring up and take a look at those. But we're proposing a hundred and twenty-five-foot monopole tower that is actually replacing a light standard. So we're going to take the light standards off the park pole, take that pole down, and put them on our pole, and the lights will function just as they do today. The facility itself will have a communications facility at the bottom, so it's a concrete building that will have an exterior that is conducive to its environment. So what that means is it would have either a stone side to it or bricks. They can be painted to match whatever the council decides. It will have landscaping around it, and the facility itself will be built so that it can hold multiple other carriers besides just AT&amp;T. We, we do that so that the facility will then only have to have one tower instead of multiple towers being replaced. The location of the tower itself was one of the things that was talked about at the previous hearings. And one of the reasons why we placed it there is because it is behind a row of trees that is along the street right there. It is also not inside of an open field that would take away from, you know, other uses that could be done at the park there, like soccer or things like that. So we've, we believe that the location is, is where it should be. We did originally look at the west side of the park, over by the, the trail that's on the west side, over by the first baseline. And access to that is, is very difficult for, obviously, building it, and then the maintenance of the facility over long term. And it would actually be in the way of many of the other activities that would happen at the park. That's why we, when we signed the agreement with the Park District, we believed that we picked the right location on the, on the side of the park where it's at today. The other things that we talked about, why is the tower needed? We provided maps. We provided call data that comes right out of our system. So when somebody picks up their cellphone, makes a cellphone call, the system automatically registers, is it a good call? Is it a bad call? Does it have problems? Is it slow? Is somebody trying to download data? And that was one of the maps that we turned in to show that this area is mostly red and yellow. In our, in our system, red and yellow is, is pretty bad. Out of the four hundred and something sites that AT&amp;T is working on to build in the Illinois, Wisconsin area, this is in the top ten to get fixed. That data does not come from, you know, just stick it here. It comes from actual people using their cell phones in their house or using our services in their house to maybe use for computers, for work. So it really comes from the neighborhood saying, this is what we need, without them actually saying, this is what we need. In regards to the health and safety, we've had a lot of discussions in regards to that. Health and safety is very important to AT&amp;T. One of the standards that AT&amp;T adheres to at every cell site is to make sure that we are within the federal limits that are given to us by the FCC. Those limits are given to us based upon what they deem that is safe, and all of our facilities are within those limits. We, we've had discussions at previous hearings in regards to providing a RF emissions report, which we'll be more than happy to do for this facility. We do an RF emissions report before the site's built, so we know what frequencies are currently at the park and/or operating. And then we'll do one afterwards to determine that, one, the cell site is within the federal limits, and two, that it is functioning properly for our network. The tower itself is alarmed back to our operations department. So if for some reason the tower gets struck by lightning, and one of the radios goes down, or now the, one of the antennas is not functioning properly, it's out of, out of sync, and it's not within the FCC limits, we will know that within a few minutes. They cut a ticket, they send somebody out within a couple hours or a day or so to get those correct, so that we're back within our federal limits again. I don't know what else I can answer for you, but I am, I am up here to answer away.
Any questions to Mr. Flowers? Alderman Smith?
Not questions, but we didn't go over this during BZNE. You put six slides in there. Would you just review those? Can they put those up?
Sure. Can somebody bring them up on the screen? That was something that came out of one of our meetings.
Yes, yes.
Of kind of examples of where cell towers are placed. So AT&amp;T, Illinois, Wisconsin, we have about, I don't know, four thousand-plus macro sites, which is, this is a macro site, built in the Illinois, Wisconsin area. Some of our sites are obviously rural, long highways, and obviously urban. And what I provided to staff, which I believe will pop up here on the screen, that there was pictures of placement of towers. And I, I started basically in the Aurora area. I think, I think there's four pictures of cell site towers within the Aurora area that are within about two hundred and fifty feet or less of a residential home. They're kind of hard to look at when you are on Google Earth, but I could go through and explain them. The easiest one I can think of without, offhand, without seeing it up on the screen here is like the North Aurora Water Tank. It's like, that's a hundred and ninety-foot monopole, because actually I did that site. We took our antennas off the water tank, and we put them on a monopole right next to it. And that sits right across the street from a residential community out there.
That is not right.
Yeah.
That is not the right slide.
Those are just the maps that, well, that's the coverage map. And you can see that all that nice red in there in the middle, red and yellow in the middle, that's basically what tells us that we've got a problem in the area. Hopefully, we're looking for the one that's got the, the water tanks on it. Whoever's got the pictures of it.
We have them here.
We have them on our.
Oh. Oh, sure. I, I didn't know there, that you guys had a copy.
Yes, we do.
I am so sorry about that. So, and I don't think mine are in the same order as yours.
Do you want to see mine?
If you just poke it up a little bit, and I'll tell you which one it is.
That's the first one.
Okay. I will find a picture that matches that picture. Here we go. So Liberty and York, Liberty Avenue and York Avenue. That cell site sits across from residential structures, is about three hundred feet away. And it is a co-location. So that's, what that means is that, that tower was built by somebody. Let's say it was Crown Castle or American Tower that owns the tower. And then like an AT&amp;T or Verizon or T-Mobile would lease space on that tower, and it co-located on that facility. If you flip your package, you'll see some with one, oh, there we go. There's a picture of the garage there. There we go. Thank you. If you see over the back part of the garage right there, which is kind of hard to see, that you can see the cell towers taking out in the backyard there.
Oh, yeah, you can.
And then you look at the map on the left-hand side, and you can see the proximate distance, and that's probably about two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet away, somewhere in there. And that's on Ogden and Eola. Want to flip to the next one there? Which one you got? That's the one we talked about first, which is the North Aurora Water Tank. That's a hundred and ninety-foot monopole, I believe, that was built there. And that sits right across from residential buildings to the, I think that's to the south right there.
So how close is that to those? Because that's right across the street.
It's literally right across the street, so probably right around about three hundred feet away, give or take. What's the next picture?
It looks to be in Aurora.
What's that?
That, that looks to be in Aurora on my ward.
That, that is. It's in North, the North Aurora.
No. Well, northern part of Aurora.
Northern part of Aurora, yes.
Correct. Okay.
This one's on North Aurora Road and Kremlin Lane. You can see by the map on the left that it sits literally right behind the townhomes that it's sitting there. And again, it's a co-location with multiple carriers on it that, that is serving the community. And then I, do you guys have the last two pictures there? Yeah.
Yes.
So, so in City of Chicago, you know, we've got a lot of sites in Chicago that look like this, because Chicago lots are usually twenty-five, thirty feet wide and about a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. So many of our cell sites in Chicago kind of look like this, if it's a standing tower by itself. And those sit literally twenty-five feet away from residential apartment buildings, and right behind that are brownstones right there. And there's brownstones on the other side of the street there, too. So it's just examples of, you know, how close do the towers go? Here's, here's another one that's, that's in Chicago that literally sits right behind brownstones up in North Shore. So. And, you know, why is it important to understand how close the, the facilities are to everybody? One of the most important things that, for us, is to make sure that you have connectivity, right? So, you know, if you built a tower that is two miles away from where you need to be, a couple of things happen. One, the tower propagates out. If you see on this map right here that you're looking at, you'll see these kind of three cones. That's the three hundred and sixty-degree coverage pattern that, that an antenna's put out. So each one of those is what we call a sector. So those sectors cover about a hundred and twenty degrees of area. So if you move that tower away from the area that you're trying to cover, a couple of things happen. One, you only have one of those cones covering your area. So your capacity gets cut down by two-thirds. Two, that when you do that, the farther you get away from where you're trying to solve the problem, the lower amount of bandwidth that you have, the lower amount of capacity that you have, which means that eventually you'll have to build another tower in another facility. So putting the facilities where we need them to begin with alleviates that problem for, for a fairly long time until capacity, you know, winds out and we have to have another facility built somewhere else. But usually in residential communities, that doesn't happen. That's usually something that happens in like downtown Chicago, where, you know, people are walking, they're watching a video, they're, they're talking on a phone. They're, the, the capacity usage is so great that we're building cell sites, you know, every block, two blocks, in, you know, City of Chicago, and some places, New York, same way. You get out to residential communities, you're going about a mile, mile and a quarter to the next site, and sometimes even closer than that. And then on some of those original maps that you saw, you see a whole bunch, there was a whole bunch of little dots all over the place. Those are what are called, people call them small cells. We call them CRAMs. Basically, what those are, are tiny stopgap measures. It's like the four, fifth slide over. Yep, that one right there. A bunch of those little dots right there, those are what are so-called small cells, and those are really just solving problems in that particular intersection or business. So they're not made to do what these macro sites. So they're not made to do what these macro sites are doing. And when you look at the coverage map, there's a couple of our coverage maps in here, you'll see there's nice, see all those nice green spots there that are right above the big red section in the middle? Those are all those micro cells. And it does solve some of the problem, but there's no capacity with them. That's part of the other issue because it usually only holds one or two technologies for frequencies, and when they max out, there's no way to really upgrade them without replacing the entire facility and, and going from there and adding more antennas. So any other questions?
Alderman Lash?
I'm sorry?
Alderman Lash.
Sir, at our committee meeting, you described a multi-year process in which these standards were developed. Could you elaborate on that for us today here?
The standards in regards to health and safety or to?
The health and safety and the level of, the level that, that the cell towers are permitted to use.
Okay. So the standards come to us from the FCC, and the telecommunications community takes that. We bring it down into our world, which is how much power the antennas have? How much frequency can we have? So what ends up happening is we have RF engineers that take our licenses, they take our frequencies, they take where we need to have coverage, and then they determine which frequencies are best to use in those areas. So for an example, the seven hundred frequencies that used to be police and fire, those were taken back from the police and fire through the whole United States. They were re-auctioned off to the telecommunications provider, and those seven hundred megahertz, they'll cover a mass distance. They'll cover a pretty big distance and have fairly decent coverage. So they'll cover two, three miles in some cases. So that allows you to be able to make phone calls, but it doesn't really give you the ability to get rid of maybe static or get rid of the ability for downloading videos and things like that. So then they add in other layers onto them. So that's why when you're seeing those cones, you'll see like there's one, two, three, four, five cones. That typically tells me that there are five technologies on that site, five frequencies that AT&amp;T controls that are exclusive ours, and that's what they're running off of. So that gives them the ability in the nineteen hundred megahertz, in the twenty-three hundred megahertz, the eight hundred and fifty megahertz, that gives them the ability to be able to get signals into houses, into basements, into communities so that we get rid of those red marks off of our maps. The standards that come to us from the FCC, they tell us how much power we're allowed to use. And that comes through the MPE studies. And the MPE studies have to do with maximum, maximum permissible exposure, which are given to us by the FCC. And our sites that are, are built, for an example, you could go to, what's the big building in downtown right here? Seven cells.
Cleveland.
Right? I've been on top of that building. Actually, I think I did that building twenty-something years ago for the cell site. So the antennas up there, they're propagating and they're covering most of downtown. But what they are doing is that if you walked in front of those antennas for an extended period of time, you're no longer a general public usage. You would be at different exposure level because you now are maybe a window washer or things. So when things like that need to happen at the building, they would call us, they'd call the operations number on air and say, we need Sector One shut down so the guys can do their work on the site. So all the guys that work on cell towers, they have dosimeters to make sure that they are within the federal limits that are given to us for the exposures. At a tower height like this, the exposure levels, obviously we'll do the study, but typically they're, they're right around about one percent of the exposure levels allowed by the, by the federal government, by the FCC. And, you know, there is talk a couple of hearings ago in regards to, you know, why don't we build a tower that's two hundred feet to cover most of the community? Again, it, it doesn't work like that anymore. People remember their bag phones and the big brick phones, right? Five watts. Those five watts, you could make a call for twenty, twenty-five miles. Right now, your, most of your phones are, are half a watt, and, and the amount of data that's being pushed through there, so the towers have to come down and they have to get closer together to be able to accomplish that. And that's not just AT&amp;T, that's all the carriers are the same way.
Alderman Smith?
Yes. Another thing that came up in committee that I think would be beneficial to reiterate is someone was concerned about a tower falling over. They don't fall over, you explained, they fall down.
Yep.
I hit on that.
So in the, in, when we go to build a cell site, obviously, safety of the tower itself is important to us. The strongest part of the tower is actually the bottom of the tower, right? So you got the case on foundation, and a case on foundation is just like a giant, this will probably be about a six-foot round hole and about twenty to thirty feet deep depending on the soil boring. It just, and rebar in it and concrete. That's what holds up the tower. There's no guidelines, there's no exterior items holding up the tower. So the tower is the strongest at the bottom, and it obviously gets weaker as it goes up in the air. And when we have a situation where we want to make sure that if, you know, a tornado hits the tower, how do we make sure that tower doesn't go onto somebody else's property or into something we don't want? We, we tell the engineering company, we want the tower to actually have what's called a, a breakpoint, but it's really a bend point in the tower. So at a hundred and twenty-five feet, this tower would typically have a bend point at about sixty feet. We can do that in like, I could do three of those. So I could do one at like forty, forty-five feet, and one at like eighty, eighty-five feet, and the tower would just curl over on itself if it got hit by something massive. The object is, is for the tower never to come down, but we all know that there are outside forces that are stronger than us out there, so.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live actually just east of this facility, and I have AT&amp;T. So I'm assuming that I will personally benefit and get better coverage than something similar to what I had with the Verizon. But I'm not worried about my own personal situation, I'm worried about the people in that two hundred and fifty foot zone. And I think I asked the question both after the planning commission's hearing and after the BZNE, or at the BZNE. What is the watts, volts per meter at two hundred and fifty feet?
So I am not an engineer by trade. So when we do the safety reports, that will tell us what the watts are coming off the tower and the volts. And the standards that we live from, or live by, I should say, from the federal government, they give us standards that we have to be within, and we will be within those standards. So I can't tell you exactly what the, the volts will be coming off of it. The watts on the tower, that, that comes off of the, the amount of radios. So it depends on what the RF engineers end up putting there. You know, I think we talked about before, it could be anywhere five.
Do we know what, what kind of antenna is going on there?
We know the antennas, but.
Do we have a similar antenna in the City of Aurora anywhere in Illinois?
Every one of our antennas that are all speaking to each other on the macro system, which is his macro, are all being turned to the same antennas. So they're, so they're all, let's say about eighty, eighty percent of them are about basically the same. So for an example, you know, the antennas that are on top of the building in downtown here, we're using example, those should be the exact same ones that are being used here. Now, they might be a newer model because the industry changes quite frequently, quite frequently, and they, they, sometimes they put two technologies in one antenna, sometimes there's three technologies in there. And the reason I can't answer exactly the amount of wattage of power that comes out of the antennas, it's really based upon when the tower is finally being built, so you got your permit, then the engineers then do their final calculations of when this tower is built, we want them to be propagating no more than this one over here, three quarters of a mile, this one antenna over here, half a mile, because we might have other cell sites that are bleeding into that. Because if you bleed over onto another cell site, then what ends up happening is you have dropped calls or you have miscommunication with the call. So at the end of the day, the, the wattage that's coming off the, the tower is, is probably close to around about five thousand watts, maybe a little bit more than that, but it's, it's within our federal limits and standards.
Okay. And, but you did say that you do RF emission reports after facilities are built, correct?
Absolutely.
Do we have an RF emission report from something similar to this tower? I, I heard what you said. You said that pretty much they got to dial it in once they.
Correct.
Uh, once they install it. But presumably, there's something that's similar to this, but, you know, similar distances from other towers.
Yeah, most of the cell sites, as a practice, most of the cell sites do not get the RF emissions report produced because they're cell sites in the air, right? So you go on a rooftop, we always do the RF emissions reports. In this particular case, what I is offering in the, in the previous hearings was, we will do one for this facility even though it's not required so that it does show that it's within the standards. We can produce that, you know, on a, on a yearly basis or whenever our CUP comes back up. But at the end of the day, the, the facilities itself, that when they're built, they have to be within the standards, they stay within the standards all, all when it's functioning, and that when something goes wrong with the site, like I was saying, like gets struck by lightning, we know that those, those antennas aren't functioning anymore within a standard and they get replaced so that they are back within the limits and they do another updated report from that.
Okay. And then, you know, the other question I asked was about safety studies that AT&amp;T's conducted, which I didn't see any added to our packet, so I, I'm not sure if you plan to share anything before this moves to the next step or not. But you, you've obviously done some safety studies to know that it's when going between five and ten thousand watts, where there's a worker working up there, it's unsafe, right? So what, do we have any safety studies to work from that AT&amp;T is produced?
So the safety studies that we would produce for this particular site.
Well, I mean, I mean in general, just a study of a sample antenna like this.
Sure. I mean, I, I have one that's, that's, you know, I'd be more than happy to, to show you, but at the end of the day, when you look at it, you'll say, well, that's not the general public because it's a rooftop site, right? So it's kind of apples and oranges, and, and it's, that's why it's, it's, I'm not trying to be evasive, but it's, it's just one of those issues where when you're trying to get what the general public, you're walking along the street, you're using your phone, how much wattage is coming down to that to be able to use, right? And like I said earlier, is that the standards that we use and we follow, that this should be within about one percent of the MPEs that's allowed by the federal government.
Okay.
Consent.
Unfinished.
Unfinished. This item will be placed under unfinished. Next item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for the report?
Mr. Mayor Protam, that is it for the BZNE committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Patty Smith. Chairman Carl Franco, would you please give the Finance Committee report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. The Finance Committee met on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, reviewed the following items. Two four dash zero three four five, resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of one million dollars over five years from the USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant with no matching funds required to improve Aurora's urban forests in USDA-approved areas.
Consent.
And this grant funding for five years is on a reimbursement basis.
Consent. This item will be placed under unconsent.
Next one is two four dash zero three five four, resolution authorizing director purchasing to purchase video conferencing hardware and services from Burwood Group Incorporated Chicago for a total amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and fifty-three cents.
Consent.
This video conferencing hardware will be used in the police chief's conference room and the water department conference room.
Okay. This item will be placed on consent.
Next one is two four dash zero four one eight, a resolution approving the purchase of bulk rock salt, the amount of seventy-three dollars and ninety cents per ton from Martin Salt Incorporated for the Division of Street Maintenance under DePage County Joint Purchasing Agreement bid for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season.
Consent.
This purchase is under the DePage County Joint Purchasing Bid Program. We also use the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Agreement. Utilizing these two allows for the flexibility if one source can't make a timely delivery of needed salt.
Okay. Consent then?
Consent.
This item will be placed under consent.
Next one is two four dash zero four four six, a resolution authorizing approval and execution of a lease agreement between the City of Aurora and Aurora Metropolitan Exposition Auditorium and Office Building Authority for lease of space at five East Downer Place, Suite G, Aurora, Illinois. This is a twenty-year lease for one dollar per year.
Consent.
Consent.
Consent. This item will be placed under consent.
Next one is two four dash zero four five one, a resolution authorizing approval of the development agreement between the city and C One Chicago Aurora LLC, providing reimbursement for public improvements that benefit the property located at twenty-seven, twenty-five Bulter Road.
Consent.
The city spent nine million, three hundred and thirty-seven, nine million, three hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred dollars in two thousand and eight for infrastructure improvements for future development. Cyrus Wan has agreed to reimburse the city for those expenditures, adjusted for inflation the amount of fifteen million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Consent.
Consent.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
And next one is two four dash zero four five three, and this is matters related to the formation and making of a recommendation as to fixing of compensation of elected officials pursuant to the Local Government Officer Compensation Act. And the Finance Committee is in the process of addressing mayoral and aldermanic compensation. We will be accumulating data over the next few weeks to determine a fair and appropriate amount of pay and benefits going forward.
Consent.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Alderman Lash?
Just a quick question on this item. It was my understanding that this item was going to be looked at and studied, coming back with staff recommendations, so I'm wondering what we're actually voting on by putting this on consent?
We're not voting on anything.
We're not voting on, we're putting on consent.
Okay. Just information only.
So again, this process will go over the next few weeks. We hope to be done by late summer, early fall, and the process in the past has been, we accumulate data from other communities, best practices, what we're getting paid, what type of compensation is appropriate for the hours we put in, and then we kind of go from there. So this is just the beginning of the process.
So it's, so it's just information only and not on consent?
Just information.
Okay.
And Mayor Protam, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Franco. The Public Health, Safety and Transportation Committee, I will present that, met on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. A twenty-four dash zero four zero six, resolution authorizing the execution of memorandum of agreement by July first, twenty twenty-four, fulfilling the obligation of the notice of intent to participate in the coalition led by Kane County, Illinois, for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant signed by Mayor Urban on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Consent.
And now, this is only if Kane County is awarded by the end of the fiscal year.
Unfinished.
Unfinished. Item will go under unfinished. Twenty-four dash zero four zero eight, resolution authorizing the City of Aurora to submit an application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the CDBG dash TV Urban Shelter Program to fund the reconstruction of the family shelter at Hestet House in the amount not to exceed two million dollars. This is to renovate the family portion of the entire first floor.
Consent.
Consent. This item will go under consent then. Twenty-four dash zero four zero nine, a resolution authorizing an application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Grant Urban Shelter Program to fund the construction of a new shelter facility at Mutual Ground, four eighteen Oak Avenue, Aurora, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed two million dollars.
Consent.
Again, as you heard, they've outgrown the facility, it was originally built in eighteen fifty-three, and this is the first phase of a multiple-phase program, and this item can go under consent. Twenty-four dash zero four two zero, resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D Downtown Core Entertainment District liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Aurora Metropolitan Expo Center Authority, Paramount Theater at five East Downer Place, Suite G, Aurora in Ward Two. This is for the new immersive theater. Which is a ninety-eight-seat theater, and this item will go under consent. And that is it for the Public Self, Public Safety, Health and Transportation Committee meeting. Chairwoman Wani Garza, would you please present the INT Committee report?
Yes, Mayor. We met on June tenth. For seven twenty-four dash of four zero one, a resolution authorizing the director of purchase to exchange order to existing contract between the city and HR Green for Broadway Avenue.
Consent.
Consent. This item will go under consent.
Next seven twenty-four dash of four one seven, a resolution to award the Broadway Avenue Source Separation Project located in Ward Two to Berger Contractors, Inc., to the bid amount of one million, ninety-four thousand and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Consent. Consent. This item will go under consent.
Twenty-four dash of four thirty-four, a resolution authorizing the director of purchase to modify the contract value previously aware to Graver Electric and Volunteer Supply Industries to LTD to combine amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the purchase of lighting materials for various locations through the city.
Consent.
Consent. This item will go under consent.
Next item, twenty-four dash of Next item, 24-0436, a resolution authorizing the Director of Possessive to process the change order to the agreement with Ratio Architects LLC for the River H Park Phase 2 Expansion PSA in the amount of $440,200.
Consent.
Consent, all right, this item will go under consent agenda.
Next item, 24-0437, a resolution to award a three-year contract with two optional one-year extension to Semper Five Land Services LLC in the amount of $98,644 for the year for the landscape maintenance of rain gardens and miscellaneous storm BPM project.
Consent.
Consent, this item will go under consent.
And they conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Chairwoman Garza. Chairman Ron Warman, would you please present the RAP Committee report?
Yeah, sure, thank you, Mayor Protam. Rules and administration procedures, committee meeting was scheduled to meet June 4, however, there were no items on the agenda, so the meeting was canceled.
Thank you, sir. There is no new business to present, but I, I believe we have an alderman's corner presentation from Alderman Carl Franco from Ward 5, please proceed.
I will leave. I think we go, there we go. [laughing] Next?
Oh.
Next, please? So, this first slide shows a couple of things. First is the Ward 5 cleanup. We had our cleanup day on May 4, this is where the residents drop off unwanted items for goods removed. I do have the ward each year, at about three locations. We go from 8:00 in the morning till 11 o'clock at night. Cost is about $7,500 per year, and it's a big hit with the residents. Next to that is our shred event, our three wards, 4, 5, and 6, partner for this event, which helps with the cost and brings a nice steady flow of participants through the morning. It will be on June 29 from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Jefferson Middle School. Next. This is a picture of the inside of the Salvation Army facility in the 5th Ward. Here we are preparing to hand out Christmas gifts to the families as part of the Angel Tree Program, which provides gifts for hundreds of children each year. They collect donated items throughout the year and hand them out a few days before Christmas. Next. We've gone over this recently, but this is a new subdivision on Prairie, is a single-family home subdivision targeted to seniors. They all, they will all be ranch homestyle homes with square footage ranging from 1,400 to 2,100 square feet. The community will be maintenance-free, there will be a park with two pickleball courts, and the excavation and tree removal has begun and been going on for the last few weeks. Next, please. These two, the first one is 1449 Senior States, I think everybody's familiar with this project. This is the one that the AHA and Northern Lice have partnered together, provide affordable housing to seniors 62 and older. There will be 70 units where the old Jericho Circle housing complex used to be. There will also be a clubhouse, pickleball courts, and an outdoor community center. A few months ago, they started accepting applications, and after the first few, first few days, they received 1,000 applications. And they are prioritizing Aurora residents and veterans. Below that is a picture of another Jericho Road subdivision, Habitat Green Freedom, which will provide 17 lots. It's the partnership of Habitat, Nycor, and the Southern Company, and will create the first smart neighborhood in the country. These net zero homes will be equipped renewable, with renewables, electric, and natural gas technologies. They will include solar panels, battery storage systems, insulated concrete walls, energy-efficient windows, LED lighting, and we broke ground on that a few months back. Next, please. Oh, I missed that one, okay, here we go. The Muse at Orchard Lake, this, it's now called Hayday Muse at Orchard Lake, and I bring this up because we approved this a few years ago, but it has some delay getting started. Sadly, the developer I had been working with for the past six years passed away last year and created a plaus in the project. So a new group has taken over and is in the process of working with staff to make some changes from the original plan. And some of those changes, they have eliminated the pool in the clubhouse, and they added seven more units and are providing a significant number of additional off-street parking places, which is very good for us. Next, please. This is Al Paso Grande, something we approved again a few years ago, it's located on the south side of Galena. It's an Hispanic grocery store, which also makes fresh tortillas, and the projected opening is next month. Next, please. Again, with something we've recently done, new recreational cannabis facility at Orchard opened a few months ago. Next, please. These next few are all in West Plazas, so this Muchacho Allegre is a new Mexican seafood restaurant in West Plaza, opened a few months ago, excellent food. Next, please. Joe's Tobacco and Vape, also open in West Plaza a few months ago. Next, next, please. Yan Gan Oriental Grocery Store, it opened in West Plaza last year, and it has an incredible selection of unique produce, and apparently, a great selection of mushrooms, which has been commented on a number of times, that you can't find in most stores. This is really, if you've never been in something like this, you gotta go in there, because you're gonna find things in there you've just never seen before, it's all excellent stuff. Next, please. This is RK Fashion, a new clothing store, it opened in West Plaza a few months ago also. This is the actual space where I used to have the 5th Ward meeting space. Next, please. Okay, so on the right is a picture of a 22-acre cornfield owned by Toyota, on Orchard Road between I-88 and Sullivan. It is for sale, and we've been working with Toyota to find the right developer. There is a potential buyer whose intent, whose intent would be for mixed-use development with residential restaurants and retail establishments. KDOT has recently approved a right-in, right-out on the east side of Orchard in a left-turn lane into the property as you ride from the north. These were fairly necessary to make the area more attractive to future development. The land on the left is an open field owned by the Myers Corporation, and they've owned it for the last 30 years, and is also for sale by Myers. Probably, again, will be used for another mixed-use type development. And just for everybody's information, Myers is not selling because of its local location or anything about Aurora. The Myers Corporation have made a commitment not to build any new facilities in Illinois. They have found it easier and cheaper to do business in our surrounding states. Just a little extra information. Next, please. And this is the Orchard Road Sound Barrier Project. Since 2017, the mayor's office, engineering, and myself have been working on replacing the fence along Orchard Road with a real sound barrier. Long story short, we have secured enough findings for this project to finally move forward the public approval process. Various state legislatures, plus the DCEO, have committed $1.3 million towards the project. The city and King County have committed approximately $1 million each, and I have committed $500,000 of ward funds, which leaves us about $235,000 short of the needed funds, which will be garnered through an SSA by the adjacent homeowners. So if more than 50% vote yes, then for the SSA, then this project moves forward. Their cost would be about $195 per year on their taxes for 30 years. Without any significant holdups, this project is projected to be completed by the fall of 2025, and that's the end of the 5th Ward report.
Thank you, Alderman Franco, congratulations, very good report. There is no need for a closed session, is there a motion for adjournment?
Adjourned meeting.
A move by Alderman Lash, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned at 6:58 p.m. Thank you, one and all.